Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:10. It's Tuesday, February 9th. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. And I understand there's some people absent this evening, so I'm gonna start off with roll call from memory until I get all my stuff up. Michelle Williams.
Yeah, here.
Nicole Davidson.
Here.
And Rich. Rich, are you there?
I'm here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's see. Richard Gordon, Sue Spang is here. Thank you for that. Okay, I'm getting my agenda on here. Okay. This is, this is tough because I had everything all set up and then my computer didn't wanna. Okay. So everybody else is absent. Do we have any alternates available this evening?
There are no alternates here in attendance.
In attendance, okay. So I'm going down the agenda here. So Tom is out.
Correct.
And so is Brian Bonback and Elizabeth are out. Who else are we missing?
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, she's, yep.
And Mary Ann, Mary Ann's no longer a member.
Oh, okay.
So, alright, let's we're gonna skip the pledge of allegiance and calls for addition to the agenda.
I did have one thing that I didn't know if we needed to revise the agenda for. I did attend the regional planning meeting and have an update to share if we'd like to have that shared today. So I don't know if that needs to be an agenda item or what.
Why don't, can you, can you kind of lump that in with your subcommittee report? Excellent, yeah, let's do that. And let's see here. Alright, so that moves on to public delegations. Public delegations is a time for the members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, items, referrals, or applications subject to a decision by the commission. A public hearing or in litigation may not be discussed. During delegations, members of the commission will not directly answer any questions or make comments. Do we have anyone from that would like to speak for public delegations?
The only member of the public I have right now is Spencer Clapp. Mr. Clapp, did you want to speak during delegations? Are you all set? Hold on, we have, you're muted.
Am I unmuted then?
Yes, now you are, yep.
Very good, okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I am, I'm here, I guess auditing the, the meeting. I've expressed interest through the Democratic Town Committee to be considered for fulfilling a vacancy on the commission. And I have expressed that in writing to Jason Diebel, who I understand forwarded that letter to Gary and to Kirk. And so that is why that is why I'm here, basically. And if anyone has any questions or anything like that, I did review my background and it, and the basis, in a sense, from my interest to the governing committee of the Democratic Town Committee.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. So, alright.
I don't have anybody else in the public.
Are we covering that item under new business tonight?
Let's see, did we have it on the agenda?
We do.
We have new business on the agenda.
You have vacancies. Is it on the agenda?
The agenda that I have doesn't have it.
I saw it in the materials.
It's not on the agenda.
It would have to get added.
Can I move to add it to the agenda?
I think that I think we would make a motion of it and second, and it needs two thirds two thirds vote to get added, right? Isn't that what the procedure is?
Thank you. So is that a motion, Michelle?
It can be, yeah, sure. I didn't know if we can still do that.
Make a motion to add it.
Alright, I have to make a motion to add our vacancy to the agenda under new business.
Do I hear a second?
I second Nicole Davidson. Thank you.
Any discussion? So my only, my only thoughts with doing this is we're like short on board members tonight, so that's one concern that I have as far as coming to a vote.
We're on a timeline, though, are we not? If we do not vote on this tonight, we lose our ability to vote on this.
Yeah, that, that is true. However, that doesn't, that's not the end of the line for, for the process of getting new members seated. It would go to the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chair, maybe before you continue, short of having a special meeting, you have 30 days in which
Oh yeah, that's true.
Fill the vacancy.
Okay. Well, there's a, a motion on the table and we've heard some discussion. Does, does anyone else have any other thoughts that they'd like to share regarding this? Okay. So by voting by roll call. Michelle Williams.
Aye.
Nicole Davidson.
Aye.
Richard Gordon.
Aye.
And myself. Yeah, aye. So let the record show that we're adding that to the agenda. Let's put it let's put it under new business. Okay, so that's that covers public delegations, covers additions to the agenda. Okay, so that brings us to communications. Mr. Gashell, are there any other communications that that have come in?
I have none at this time. I think most of you are aware about the Connecticut Bar Association's upcoming land use law program on March 6th, I think it is, Jen? I think you, some of you have already reached out to us to, to register, so just a reminder, if you're interested, let Jen or I know, we'll get you registered. That, that's all I have.
That would be highly, highly recommended if somebody has time and they're able to attend. I think I saw Rich signed up and Michelle, did you sign up as well?
I did it last year, but I think Nicole signed up.
Oh, perfect.
They didn't have this event last year. They only have it every other year, the Connecticut Bar Association?
Then it must have been that year because I remember going to Wesleyan and you get the big fat book and it's a long day.
The nice thing about this time is you still get the fat book, but you get to do it from home in your pajamas and you can skip the parts that don't apply to you.
That would have been cool, but it is a really great event.
Yeah.
So thank you, thank you, everybody for signing up to do that. That'll be a really great really great thing for more members of our commission to have that information because there are some technical bits that I'm sure they'll go over that are really important for what we do. So thank you for signing up for that. And okay, so that brings, no, no other communications. We saw the communications, I think you, you posted on the on the website regarding resumes that we received from Mr. Clapp and from Mr. Fitzgerald, so I'm hoping everybody had an opportunity to look those over. Zoning representative, I think.
It was, it was me. It was a short meeting. They didn't discuss much. The, there is a public hearing open for 159 Boston Post Road and the, it's continued until February 18th, 2021 for a mixed use permit. Next was Bill Shear put in for a permit to for erosion mitigation at the end of Laurel Drive, which they granted. The work is going to be three days in duration and they're going to re replace barriers, concrete barriers with rip, rip rap, yes, to cover the concrete barriers.
You got it.
Yeah, how was it? Nothing else.
Thank you for that. Thank you for attending that. Okay, so that brings us to ex officio, Mr. Slerno.
I'm muted. Good evening, everyone. So as you know, we're in the middle of budget season. We opened up our first budget deliberations yesterday. That will continue through the month. We have a total increase proposed between the Board of Education, which has a 4.05% increase requested. Town total is 3.08% would, overall would be a 3.73% increase. And this is just at the beginning of deliberations. We did get a good report on we did, we do have some new businesses and stuff, so our income coming in from taxes with some, our what is it called? The capital, I mean, not the capitalist, blank.
Grand list.
Yeah, grand list, thank you. Grand list grew pretty healthy, I think over 1.7% or something like that, so that, that's good news for us. So that's gonna be going on. The only other thing of interest is we, we allocated $25,000 for a study for the 161 corridor. So this, we're gonna receive a grant of $250,000 from the state. We needed to put up 10%. This is for a study from essentially it really starts all the way at the high school, all the way down to where East Patagonia Road is primary, the primary focus is gonna be where the two lanes by Ilianos go down to one to to East Pat. And basically, as you know, the, the problem is 161 along the pond, there's not enough room for a sidewalk, it's not really, not really safe area there with some sharp corners, so that, that's gonna be studied by the state. It is a state road, so it's ultimately the state's responsibility, but just, you know, that's, that's coming. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Slerno. Mr. Gashell, Planning Director.
I've already mentioned the Connecticut Bar Association item. I have nothing else at this time.
Okay, Ms. Williams, subcommittees.
Yeah, so for the P O C D, we are just about ready. Thank you, Jen, I saw your note to send out letters, email correspondence to the town boards and commissions to request some time on their agenda in the coming weeks to talk about the plan of conservation development being approved and what that may we hope will mean for their committees and we have discussed keeping the P O C D Subcommittee active to meet just prior to this meeting every month so that we can kind of keep a handle on implementation as hopefully many aspects of the plan will get implemented. So more on that hopefully next month. But as far as the Regional Planning Commission, they had their meeting at the end of January. Sadly, there was not a quorum, so not a lot got done officially, but there was a lot of good discussion among the members who were there. Everyone kind of went through and gave an update on different things happening in their towns and I think as is the case for many of our towns, challenges or hurdles, good news, bad news. A lot of other towns in the region are facing the same thing and most of them have also not come up with solutions. So there was some talk about some different themes in the P O C D, particularly expanded allowable uses for farms like weddings and events, as we've talked about. Affordable housing discussions and one of the members mentioned some of the work being done by desegregate CT which has evaluated all of the towns in Connecticut for their for how they meet the current affordable housing requirements and they do have some things going on at the legislature, I believe, this year. That might be good to keep an eye on. And see what else. Nothing, I mean, a lot of the other towns are, are relooking at their affordable housing regulations, which we have discussed too. Oh, here was one that I thought may become an issue here, and I'm not sure if it has on the zoning side, but some towns are having a problem with the number of Airbnbs and whether or not that is a commercial use in a residential area and complaints from neighbors and things like that, and whether or not they're able to regulate it on the land use side. It didn't seem that anybody had made any, you know, zoning regulations to that end, but a couple towns had adopted ordinances through their Board of Selectmen or, you know, similar executive group to handle that. Their next meeting is in April, so I'll have an update after that, but
Did you just volunteer to go in April?
Well, I think I, I, so, so when I agreed to be the representative, I was under the assumption that there was one meeting per year. However, it seems that the meetings are typically quarterly, except in 2020, there was one meeting.
This is how we roped you in. This was part of the plan to get you to do it. Thank you for doing that. And, and we can, we can discuss whether or not you do the next one or if I go or whatever. We can figure that out.
Yeah, it was, it was fine.
Yeah, it, there, it's really great to hear the other towns talk about the stuff that they're facing, so it, you know, it kind of, kind of makes it interesting that, you know, how other towns are dealing with things and that we're not alone with all the problems and all that, so thank you for going to that and thank you for the report. Did we take any action items from that or anything?
Um, I think there are some things that we'll probably bring to the P O C D, but I know we had discussed at one point last year, possibly the need to establish a more formal committee to look at affordable housing, so I, I, coming away from this feel even more strongly that that's probably the way we'll want to go.
And what, what town, department or whatever, would, would you feel that that kind of work would be done under, would that be done under the planning or under zoning or how do you, how do you feel, where do you feel that lands?
Gary, where's our current affordable housing plan? I thought it sat under this commission.
Yeah, it's a, an appendix to the plan of development. And the, the big push there, just so you know, as a commission, statutory. We now have to adopt an affordable housing plan, so and I suspect, I'll have to go read the statute, but I suspect that the state will want the municipalities to treat that just like we do the P O C D and I, I think it's on a five-year period updated. So, but that'll be our next hurdle. So I'm, I'm looking into that as we speak, if you will. So I'll give you some more information on that as things progress.
And just to add to, because multifamily housing is dealt with in zoning, zoning has, zoning does have affordable housing regulations and the, and the regulations that have been, been on the books for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like that, that committee or whatever we formed should have some representation and from both of the, both of the commissions.
Certainly, I would recommend.
We've done that in the past where we had a subcommittee between both boards.
Yeah, I wonder too if it's something that you might want broader other representation to Board of Selectmen, Commission on Aging. I don't know, just thinking of various stakeholders.
Yeah, that's definitely, that, those are good thoughts. We, we will definitely run those to ground when we get a little, when, when are we looking to start doing that kind of work?
I think we have two years. Two or three to, to adopt a, a plan. I mean, we already have a plan, so we just need to update it bring it current, where municipalities that don't have a plan must adopt one, so I'll have to look at the timeframe set forth in the statute and, and make sure that we follow those, but I believe we have about two years before it has to get approved.
Okay, so that's on your, it's on your, on your list of things to watch.
And the C O G does have resources for that, too. That was one of the items of discussion, of course, if there's budget, which I know we're familiar with.
Budgets, that's a big
Or, or no budget.
That's another big thing. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Michelle. So that brings us down to me. I don't really have anything important to report. Except, again, thank you, everybody, for being involved. Thank you for volunteering and really appreciate everybody's time. So thank you, everybody, for coming in engaging in really good discussion and, you know, doing, doing the best thing for the town. Thank you. So, meeting minutes, had everyone had a chance to approve the regular meeting minutes from January 12th, 2021? Do I hear a motion to approve? Did anyone have any corrections before, actually, before we make a motion? Should, did, did anybody have any corrections? I looked them over. I thought they were fine. Firstly, I thought there was a typo about that public hearing. But then I remembered that we scheduled it a month out, so next meeting, we're gonna have a public hearing. But everything, so everything from the, from the meeting minutes, I thought was fine. Okay, I'm hearing nothing, so I'm looking for a motion.
I submit a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, Michelle Williams. Any further discussion? No? Okay, so let's move to vote. Michelle Williams.
Aye.
Richard Gordon.
Aye.
Nicole Davidson.
I abstain. I wasn't present.
Okay. And myself, aye. So let the record show three zero zero, or three one zero, yeah, three one zero. So that's enough to pass it, right?
It is.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so let the record show, we are approving the minutes, the meeting minutes from January 12th, 2021. Public hearings, there are none. Subdivisions pending and resubdivision pending, none. Zoning referrals, we have one. It's an application of the Town of East Lime Zoning Commission for a text amendment to the East Lime Zoning Regulation, Section 15.1, definitions of substantial damage and substantial improvement and change would, to, to change the time period from 10-year period to two-year period. Mr. Gashell, could, could somebody put up the actual thing so can we can get some context for this section?
Certainly, Jen, if you can just scroll down. So essentially, you can only improve a structure that's from damage up to 50% of the market value in a 10-year period. That's under the current zoning regulations. They'd like to reduce that 10-year period to two years.
And what is the intent of this? This
It all relates back to insurance, the town, we're in what they call it, we're in in terms of FEMA, so we're in a community rating system program with FEMA and we report to them, what that does is that will help bring down the premiums for residents living in the coastal zone typically or in flood-prone areas. However, within that area, if, if a structure is to withstand damage they can replace their home, typically not a problem, but if they just want to upgrade the home, remodel the home, well, they can't improve it to more than 50% of the market value of the structure within a 10-year period. Because obviously the, the insurance I guess would not, there wouldn't be enough to pay out for the, the newly renovated dwelling, but I guess if they change this to a two-year period that would allow for people to improve their homes more frequently reducing the blight issue or the for lack of a better term. And I, I certainly can understand that, how it relates specifically to, you know, why two years versus 10. Certainly, home maintenance happens more frequently than typically a 10-year period. And why they chose 10 years to begin with, I'm not certain. It is a zoning regulation. My, my guess would be it was related to insurance premiums and, and those policies being able to pay, but frankly, those are private issues. Those are, those are civil matters between insurance companies and landowners, not, not with the town. So in this case, I think you know, this, again, it's just a zoning regulation. I can get it, you know, further information on that from Mr. Mulholland if, if need be. But that said.
Okay.
I think we lost Gary.
Uh-oh. Members of the commission that are still here, do we, do we have any comments or thoughts or concerns regarding this?
I'm wondering what kind of the standard is for FEMA, because I know this came up a little bit in our coastal resiliency discussions for the P O C D and I, I'm just curious to
Do you mind if I give you a little bit of a
Please.
So, one of the reasons that the zoning commission is looking to do this is a lot of other towns around us are changing from the 10-year to a two-year time period. What we're seeing happen in the office is we see building permits coming in for properties that are in these flood zones. People are putting on a new roof. They're putting on an addition. Trying to accommodate an additional child, especially while they're home right now. Everybody wants a rec room somewhere. So if you have a house that's worth $250,000 and you put on an addition that costs a $75,000, well, you've increased the value of the home now and you have to wait 10 years before you can spend 50%. So if you need a roof, if you need a boiler or a new heating system or you want to put in air conditioning, all of that is cumulative. But you also have to include items that don't typically involve a building permit, painting, roofing, new cabinets, new fixtures in your bathroom. All of those numbers have to be added up over the 10-year period. The reason they're trying to reduce it to two is because you eventually run into a problem where, oh my gosh, a tree fell on my roof. I can't fix it because of that, that regulation being such a large amount of time. It's, it's becoming I want to say cumbersome for people to maintain properties that are in these areas because they're running into this issue. And when you hit that 50% threshold, you have to bring the entire property up to code for FEMA. So that's, that's, I think, a reason they're looking to reduce the number of years that they're doing the, the math calculation for that 50% number. Because I know we've had to kick back a few building permits because of it.
Yeah.
So, and I think the 10-year number was way back when the recommendation from FEMA, because the regulations, I think, are straight out of FEMA's suggestion.
So what does FEMA suggest now? It's kind of my, thank you, that helped me understand it better.
They're still 10 years. They haven't changed it. They haven't changed it. But like I said, we have seen Waterford, I think. I know Gary hasn't gotten back in here yet, but I know that it's the shoreline towns that are going to the two years. I know Waterford was one of them, Groton, and I think Bill said Noank is also looking to do the change. So but there's a couple of others as well.
If we change to the two years, would that affect the way FEMA deals with any issues we have in the town? A disaster?
I don't think so, but that would be a good question for the zoning.
So our charge is to determine whether or not this amendment would be consistent or inconsistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Yeah?
I think so. And then the who wrote the section on the the coastal resources and coastal
I did.
Management.
I did. And that's why I had so many questions because
Yeah.
Really, what we want to try to do is to move people toward that code to improve the resiliency of their structures. But I certainly see this as a very nuanced issue.
Yeah, I could see. I could see how the intent of this could be somewhat different from FEMA's point of view. Where, you know, people have built so close to the water and at some point, the insurance companies aren't going to want to pay to have these structures rebuilt anymore. So I don't know. I'm kind of I feel I feel for the people who own the properties and and being like hamstrung by a by a 50%, you know, threshold for the amount of money that you can put in over 10 years, especially given all the storms and everything. From their point of view, the 10 years definitely a bad thing, but from a from a coastal resilience point of view, I could see how they wouldn't want people rebuilding that close to the shore. Or, you know, if they're continually taking damage from storms, I could see how FEMA wouldn't want them to rebuild or even the insurance companies for that matter.
Yeah, and I'm curious. It doesn't seem like it's even for rebuilding. It seems like it's getting, if you are going to spend more than 50% of the value of your home, then you need to get it to code, which I would imagine would be like utilities on a second floor, pilings, things like that. Is that is that is that kind of what this is referencing?
Yep, it's moving the utilities. It's it. The thing is, is at some point, it becomes so financially cumbersome for some people to bring it up to code, that that's when we start having issues with. And I think it's something that Bill mentioned in the memo. It results in the deterioration of many properties and the loss of the home's traditional character because people do something less costly. So they'll they'll use the cheap version because they they can't meet the category. So they have to do something that costs less than they might otherwise spend.
Yeah, this is tough.
Can we, is this up on the website? Because I wouldn't mind giving this this guy once over. And I apologize that I haven't hadn't had time to do that just yet.
And Gary is back. If you guys have any questions for him.
Hi, Gary.
Sorry.
Gary, while you were out, we were having a discussion about FEMA's requirements for rebuilding versus the homeowners. You know, their their problems with not being able to maintain their houses the way that they would like to because of this 50% cap. And we were trying to get some you know, background about what FEMA was trying to do, because this all stems from FEMA, right? Isn't that what you said, Jen? Like, the original, the original requirements stemmed from FEMA?
Yeah, the I my understanding from Bill was that the regulation was pretty much boilerplate FEMA language.
The original was, but then but then this this proposed change here is a deviation from that.
Yep.
So I could catch some of that conversation. I and I don't know where my computer, but what I did hear was one question that that I had mentioned regarding the community rating system, my discussions with Mr. Mulholland, we're contemplating whether it's still worth the town's interest to remain in that program. Based on the the cost that the town is expending versus the return that the residents actually receiving. So there's a bit of a discrepancy there in the value. So it's, I think somewhere around $35,000 annually is saved in insurance premiums for being in the program. Where the cost is of the salaries of roughly three department heads working toward staying in the program is eating that up quickly. So there's some discussion there that we're having internally. That said, you know, the question becomes is by reducing this to a two-year period, does that impact that that rating that FEMA gives us? I think that's something that that is really important to answer because the next question becomes, and as I heard as part of the P O C D, you know, here we're trying to retreat, if you will, from our shorelines to provide that buffer, right, from from storms and storm surges, sea level rising, which is understandable. At the same time, as human beings, we're going to use the coastline. We're still going to inhabit it. So you know, where's the happy medium? I'm not certain. It's hard to say right now when you have landowners who have specific rights and to use their property for single-family dwellings, their their existing building lots, to tell them, you know, that they can't rebuild, that's a pretty significant impact. You know, I think that's where, you know, FEMA needs to kind of come along and say, okay, well, here's the value for your home. You know, and they've started doing that along our coastlines across the US. But those are only in specific areas. And I think right now, specific cases. So what do we, what does the rest of the country do? Is we're handling it in fashions like this. I, again, I still think maybe the planning commission here, it may be worth, you know, picking this up at our next meeting. I think the public hearing for this, though, is is that next Thursday, Jen?
No, it's the first one in March.
March 4th in his letter.
March 4th.
We could pick up more discussion on this and get some answers to the questions that that we've asked. Certainly, because, I mean, from my perspective, well, I can appreciate homeowners wanting to maintain their home. How do we find, you know, where does it fit in with the P O C D as it relates to our coastal resources?
Yeah, and I'm looking at that now, too. And it's giving me even more questions than answers because we don't, I mean, this is something very specific and we don't address it, you know, flat out. But we do talk about things like, you know, adapting a different definition of freeboard, which would require further improvements to these coastal homes.
I just want to note that the public hearing on this is March 4th, and your next meeting is March 9th. Your next regular meeting is March 9th.
So we could either take action on this this evening. You could also hold a special meeting, certainly. Look to you. My own, you know, my opinion professionally is that it is in you know, opposition to the P O C D as it's been written. I think we could articulate that. Obviously, if we make, if the commission makes a finding that it's inconsistent with the plan, we would just specify why.
So that would force them to do, what, two-thirds?
Two-thirds, which they need to have any way to even adopt this.
So the end, the end outcome would be really them, in either case, we end up, they end up needing a two-thirds majority vote to pass it, regardless of what we say. The only thing is what kind of input we would get them.
Right. And I believe the commission, you know, certainly weighs the plan commission's response and report in their decision-making. So it does become part of their record.
Right. Okay, so, Michelle, you mentioned a section of the P O C D that.
Yeah, so we do talk, I mean, we have quite a bit of information from FEMA. We don't talk about this program specifically, which is not surprising because we can't get into that level of detail in a document this expansive. But there is one section, I mean, there's a number of sections where we're talking about kind of allowing softer barriers as they present themselves. But there is a section where we talk about changing the definition of freeboard, which so that if we if I don't know if we want to look at this now, or if we want to research it on our own and table this for another special meeting. But we do talk about adopting the state of Connecticut's definition of freeboard into our flood control ordinance and zoning regulations. And it talks, this recommendation talks about how the projected sea level rise for Connecticut is 20 inches by 2050. And so this requires that how the houses are, the current regulations be moved up by two full feet of freeboard to make them more resilient. So that to and you can, it's on page 31 of the PDF, but it's page 30 of the document. So.
Can I jump in just to have a second?
Yeah.
If if our requirement is to raise the freeboard of an existing home two feet, I got to think that that would cost a lot of money.
That's kind of what I'm getting at.
Well, I'm wondering if it comes close to the 50% threshold, or even if it's only 20% threshold, and then they end up spending 30% of their 10-year allocation to do something else. You know, or say, say they spent 40% of their their value improving other things, and then they're, they want to go and bring it up the two feet. That's going to push them at 60% of the value, and they would be forced to say, no, you can't have a permit for that.
Well, no, they would be forced to meet the existing FEMA code. So I think this gets at, if you want to improve your home after 50%, you need to meet code, whereas your home might not be meeting code right now. Right?
I believe it has to meet code regardless, the improvements.
But you'd have to bring it up to date on FEMA codes if you if you are investing more than 50% of the value.
Right.
And we're encouraging in the P O C D, getting your home up to FEMA codes.
Right, particularly if you're spending more than 50% of the value.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a bit here to understand. This is an interesting interesting topic. I, so so from that respect, I would think allowing them to shorten the time period would give them more more available percentage, so to speak, of the value to to do those improvements. Am I, or am I not understanding it exactly? Yeah.
I guess what comes to mind is that, okay, over a 10-year period, the market goes up and down. So the fair market value is increasing and decreasing on an annual basis.
Right.
Probably steady over a 10-year period. But that said, in any given year within that 10 years, if I need to make an improvement, if I can demonstrate, you know, the value of my house being more, right, maybe I can improve it a little more this year. But I guess the question is, I mean, I've never seen a home double in price, but I guess if it were possible, right? Then could you possibly improve the house beyond the 50%? I mean, I don't know. There's some, I just have some difficulty with with the value of the home being able to fluctuate over a 10-year period. So is there a difference in you know, if I improve my house up to 50%, well, then a new clock starts ticking. Right? And I got to wait another 10 years. But what if the value of the home doubles?
Then you have another appraisal and you've got more money to to invest.
But then on the two-year clock, you could argue the same thing, like I can just keep spending every two years and my new clock starts and I'm spending on what I want to spend on versus what might make my property more
Resilient?
Resilient.
Right, but you have to look at, like I said, from the other perspective. If you have a property that's had a 50% improvement and you can't make another improvement for 10 years, say your boiler goes, say your roof goes, you now have a house that's inhabitable.
I totally, I understand that both sides. I mean, this is complicated for sure. I would be interested to look at minutes from Stonington making that update. Is it just proposed or has it? Have they done it? When we were looking at P O CDs, Stonington was one that we aligned with pretty consistently.
I don't know if they've done it. Gary, do you know if it's?
I don't know if it ever came to fruition.
It's referenced in his letter. I just didn't know if.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we can look at both of those communities, Waterford and Stonington, as well as Noank. I think Noank has implemented it. I recall Bill indicating that. So, I mean, certainly, there's some big implications with this applicant, you know, with this application proposal. And if the commission so chooses, we can continue to take a look at it and hold a special meeting later on this month. Or we can act on it now.
Gary, even if you, if you guys waited to the ninth, zoning could wait for your response, or they could vote anyways with a two-thirds majority. So you could also request that they, you know, wait for your feedback to the second meeting.
Right, I see.
I mean, this census is coming from the zoning commission.
Right. Right, they have no time limit for holding a public hearing. They can keep it open.
Yeah.
So we could request that we would like additional time to look into the these questions. I mean, it's a significant change in the reg. So and I think it does have some significant impacts. It's a significant change in the reg, so, and I, I think it does have some significant impacts.
I can see both sides of this. I could see saying no, just flat no. And I could see saying yes, too. I'm not, it's not clear right now for me what, what is the right answer.
I mean, I would question the two years versus why not five, right? Cut it. What was the impetus to go to two, or was it just, you know, we'll pick a number out of the hat, but. I, I, that I'm not sure of. I don't have much other background on this, I have about as much background on this as you guys have in terms of the request. So, yeah, I can dig, dig some more.
Well, they, they certainly think it's a good idea, or else they wouldn't have sent it to us.
Correct.
So. I don't know that we have. Do we, do we, and this is an open question for everybody, do we have enough of a, a sense of any sort of message or questions that we would like to have? Ready for either next meeting or a special meeting? I mean, what would, what would, what would the board members here, what would it require for us to make some sort of? Decision about this? I think I, myself, I think I would like to do a little bit more reading, read our P O C D a little more carefully and then read this a little more carefully, because. I'm not clear of the implications of this 100%.
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to do some more research on the FEMA program itself and kind of. What this change triggers there. It seems like it's a leveled thing.
So here's another thing, too. This could go, if, if they do, and I'm just, this is kind of, I'm just throwing this out here. If they change this to two years. And every two years, they make 50%. Of the value in improvements. In four years, they've doubled the value of the house. In six years, you know, one and a half times, or two, two and a half times the value. So is there, in that case, they, somebody would have such an investment in this property that. They would never want to vacate it, and it would never go back to any sort of buffer state. Because it was so built on and built up. Does anybody? Feel or?
Yeah, I would have kind of agreed with that. I, I think the, I mean, there's the, there's an issue with the program as a whole, right? I mean, if you think about it, you're still incentivized to rebuild your home. Within the coastal zone, so. The fact that you can do that, it, you know, it's kind of at odds with the. You know.
Right, I agree. And, and if anything, it even accelerates. The opposite of what, what they would want for a coastal zone. Is it that?
Now, you know, my question is, you come in in four years, you doubled the value of the home, so now 50% of that, I have another two years I can improve it.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Right, without having to make coded.
Yeah, so you, you're like exponential growth on your value.
Right, every.
Nobody's ever going to leave that piece of property.
And, and that may be why FEMA suggested 10, right? It prevents that. You gotta wait 10 years before you can do it again type of a thing, but.
I feel bad for the people who own these houses that fall into that category that. You know, they can't make any improvements or fix their boiler or put a new roof on. I feel bad about that.
I, I can certainly sympathize with that, I understand that, but at the same time, the landowners are responsible for, when they acquire their property, to understand what they're buying.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I can't do their homework. I mean, we, we can only educate the public so far by providing the regulations and keeping it, making it public, but. You know, unfortunately, I would say that falls on the realtors of the world to educate their, their clients.
And they can make those repairs, they're just then forced to, in the program, do the other things. As well, so, and.
Gary, how many houses in town fall into this?
Um, quite a few. I can get you a number. I don't have the exact one off the top of my head.
That may be useful for the commission to know.
Is it the same as the map? The floodplain map, is it whatever's in that FEMA?
Yeah, I would think so. This is.
Yeah, there's, there's, most of it's on the coast. And a few, there may be a few homes along like Latimer Brook that, that fall within the flood hazard area there. But yeah, we can, we can get a number on that.
I don't know, I, I haven't heard much discussion in the, in the favor of allowing this other than. Sympathy for the homeowners and property owners. Does, do we, do we, do we want to? I'm looking for a sense from, from the commissioners here. If we want to table this discussion and ask for more time, or if we feel like we have. A feeling one way or another, or.
I would be interested in knowing why they want to go from 10 years to two, why not to five?
That's a good question. Yeah, I like that. Do, do we, Michelle, you had another, I think it was Michelle?
Yeah, I'd like more time, too. Same thing. I, I, two seems. I, I'm sure it's not arbitrary, but it hasn't been explained.
Right, okay. So we have that question, why two years, not five or six or three or? So that's one question that, that we, we would like to have some, some understanding. Over.
So I, I also have, again, how this impacts the community rating, FEMA CRS program. Uh, and as our ex officio said, the number of structures within the flood hazard zones that would be impacted. So those are three items I can, I can go track down answers for.
Okay, so, so when we could ask them, we could, we could, if, if you, if you don't mind putting that into a memo or something and sending it off to the zoning. And maybe, maybe ask them to answer those questions and also. Let us know whether they're going to be willing to keep their public hearing open until we get those answers. Because if they're, if they're not gonna, if they're not going to be able to get us those answers by our next. Meeting, and they're not, not willing to leave their public hearing open, then that would force us, if we were to act on this, to have another meeting. Right?
Yep.
So. Mr. K, so if you don't mind, would you please do that? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Before we move on, does anyone else have any other thoughts on that? Okay, that was a good discussion, and thank you, everybody, for that. I think. I think we're going to move on. This one actually seems like it might be a little. A little easier to work through. It's a municipal referral, the town of Eastlime. Department of Public Works. For review of a proposed new vehicle scale, scale house building and septic system at the Eastlime Transfer Station located at 91 Roxbury Road, Eastlime, Connecticut. So. This kind of, in my opinion here, I think this kind of falls under. Needed maintenance and upkeep, so. I don't know, I think, I think this. Would come under doing normal business for the town. That's a, it's a workable building there, but I'd be, I'd be surprised if the heat works great, and I don't see, I don't know if I see a bathroom in there. Is that what the septic?
So there is, there is no bathroom. I spoke to one of the guys the other day, when they asked for a bathroom, they gotta go all the way to Remagen Way.
Oh.
So there will be a bathroom in the new building.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think that we should do that for them. That's a pretty. I think they need to have a bathroom over there. I don't, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I would say in terms of, does this meet the P O C D? Yes, we want to be able to weigh our waste. Properly on the new scale. So that we have accurate, you know.
Yeah.
Data.
For sure, for sure. As long as this project is done like reasonably, I mean, look at this, this is not an extravagant thing here. It's a break area with a bathroom and a ramp and a office. I think that, I think that our employees of the town deserve that. Definitely.
And I think I was reading, all the financing is being done by, well, via grants or other, other financing that won't. Be, won't be very expensive, Tim.
Perfect.
State gives a certain amount of money every year for capital improvements, and that's going to be put toward this.
Fantastic. I like it. I think it, I think that. We don't, we don't really have to. Point out any sections of the P O C D that.
So your charge under the statute, section eight dash 24, I believe it is, you just furnish a report to the Board of Selectmen. Then in favor of it, or whatever your comments may be.
Well, I think it's, I don't know, my comments would be that. I use the dump a lot, and I think it's a great service, and those guys over there deserve to have a nice building and place to go to the bathroom and have a break. I don't know.
I would add.
I don't know how technical of a report you want, but that would be my report.
You would make a finding of a, you know, that's favorable or unfavorable. If you found that it was unfavorable, then the Board of Selectmen, there's actually a whole procedure that they have to kind of go through.
Okay.
For regarding the, the financials. They need a two thirds vote type of a thing to approve projects.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I guess. Any other commission members have any thoughts that they want to share about this?
Well, I think I totally agree with you that, you know, we should put town employees in a better facility, but to, but I, I feel like that's really subjective for our recommendation to the B O S. So I would add that. Another reason to support this is that it brings the building up to accessibility standards, which is something in our P O C D that we want. Town employees to be in accessible buildings, and I see that there's a new ramp in the. Plans, so that would be a big plus in addition to the bathroom. And that we do want an accurate, up to, you know, a well maintained scale for measuring town waste. I think that's only going to become more important as our community moves forward.
I agree. All right, so. What do we need to? Do this, you, you say you need a, a report or a memo?
Basically, so I can, you just bet you're going to vote to approve the project, so I, I can just tell you from the, right from the statute. Basically, it has to get referred to a report, novice change of this municipality may take final action approving. An appropriation for any proposal prior to the approval of the proposal by the commission pursuant to this section, the failure of the commission to report within 35 days. After the date of official submission of the proposal to it, for a, sorry, for a report shall be taken as approval of the proposal. In the case of disapproval of the proposal by the commission, the reasons therefore shall be recorded and transmitted to the legislative body of the municipality. A proposal disapproved by the commission shall be adopted by the municipality, or. In the case of disapproval of a proposal by the commission subsequent to final action by a municipality approving. An appropriation for the proposal and the method of financing of such appropriation, such final action shall be effective only after the subsequent approval of the proposal by a two thirds vote. Of the town council, where one exists, or a majority vote of those present in voting in an annual or special town meeting. Or be a two thirds vote of the representative town meeting or city council or ward and burgesses, as the case may be. So that is the effect that you guys have on town projects. So favorable and then random, obviously, it's, it's a non-issue here.
Okay, so I, from the comments, I'm, I'm getting the sense that everybody is in favor of this project. Do I hear a motion to find this project favorable and to direct. Generating a memo as such?
Sure, so moved.
Thank you, Michelle. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, any further discussion? Okay, with no discussion, let's move to vote. Michelle Williams?
Aye.
Nicole Davidson?
Aye.
Richard Gordon?
Aye.
Kirk Scott, aye. With the record show that we are approving. The municipal referral. So old business bylaws. Yes, I, I read through the bylaws again, and. I was hoping that everyone else would have a, a chance to read through them also. My one, one thought that I shared with you last time. I think was that I wanted the, the bylaws to reflect. How we are doing things and, and I know, and I commented that. Town staff is taking up, taking a lot of the responsibilities that. Were originally designated to the secretary and town staff is doing a great job. I feel like. Does anybody know when the last time the bylaws were updated?
I believe it was 2011 or somewhere in that area.
Okay, so.
2010, May of 2010.
Right, and. And we, it's, it's hard to know how, how much they actually edited or updated. I, I don't know, but, but some of the bylaws may actually even be before that. So. My, my thought was to just, you know, try to. Maybe appoint a subcommittee, or maybe, maybe even discuss it during our regular meetings, anything that you, you know, the other. Commission members would like to see changed.
Looks like there was a revision in 2016.
Okay.
According to, according to the memo.
Okay. Um, yeah, so, like I said, I, I shared my thoughts. Does anyone else have any? Input as far as what they would like to see changed?
I agree. I think. As I was going through, much of this, maybe even up to half of it, is really being handled. By staff. And in my opinion, far better than we would as volunteers. So I would love to see us amend so that we are following our bylaws consistently.
Right. Right. Yeah, and I agree, I agree 100% that town staff is doing a really good job, and we appreciate that. You know, especially, especially as we get more and more busy as a town with new, new developments, and. There's a lot of regulatory requirements that it's hard for us to keep up with. So. Professional help is definitely, definitely needed.
I had a question for our ex officio when I was reading the bylaws, if I, if you don't mind if I. I had a question for our ex officio when I was reading the bylaws, if I, if you don't mind if I ask that.
Oh, for sure.
Do we still produce an annual town report?
Uh, not officially. It used to years ago. I'm talking twenty-something years ago, but.
Not that long.
What's that?
Not that long ago.
It feels like it.
Well-
Every department had and, and, and would put, you know, submit something and it would get put together and report. I don't know, Jen, when do you remember the last one?
Two thousand and ten.
Okay.
When we revised these bylaws. Cause I saw, we're definitely not doing that.
Yeah, the last, the last time that I think we submitted one, uh, cause I have the folders that have each year in it, uh, and I just went through the zoning cabinet. So the last one was, that was two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven?
Yeah, sometimes I would download for every, how many permits and what the permits were for and sometimes go pretty crazy on that.
Well, I felt pretty bad about our level of compliance with our own bylaws, but that makes me feel that we can let ourselves off the hook a little bit.
Okay, so, so you, you agree there's, there's, we're needing some updates. Um, do we, do we wanna try to do this as part of our regular meeting or do you feel like this is something we should take offline? And, and that's an open question for everyone on the board. Okay, so we could, I mean, the other thing is like, not to push more onto town staff, but like they already know all the things that they're doing for us, you know? Um, do, do they feel like uh, that the bylaws are appropriate at this point? And that's an open question for Gary and Jen.
Well, I, I would start with the bylaws should be amended either to reflect the way business is being conducted or we change the way we conduct business to reflect the bylaws.
I agree a hundred percent.
That said, um, some basic things that can change, you know, where staff is doing the work of say the secretary or the chair and preparing different documents. We can quickly make those changes, get them back to you in a rough draft form, uh, for the next meeting. If there's any other additions or things like that or suggestions that anyone has, you can forward them to me. Uh, we could either incorporate them as, you know, additions, obviously we'll just track the changes. Or if you so inclined to do a subcommittee, uh, we have the P O C D subcommittee that may be kinda, we got our hands full with that, I guess. I don't know, that, that'll be ramping up. Uh, I will say most likely, Michelle, uh, looking, was it next week or the following Wednesday? To do a special meeting so that we can adopt a calendar for the rest of the year and then we'll have a meeting time set. You know, I, I don't think there's a whole lot to change in the bylaws, so I'm thinking maybe, maybe we just start with that. We just change what we know probably should change in terms of workflow, bringing that back to you.
I think that's a good idea. And, and this, and this could be, if this could be, you know, maybe we do have to change the way we're doing business. I mean, I feel like, I feel like, uh, the work that the town staff has been doing for us is, is really good and, you know, keeping us on task and organizing the information and helping us make the decisions. I feel like that's all been working really well, the way that we've been working. It's so, but yeah, I agree with you. I agree with you. If that, if you, if you are willing to take that approach, then yes, I, I would, I would agree with that.
The only other topic I think is worthy of discussion is as a result of the pandemic, as we know, we're in this venue of Zoom. Um, you know, nobody knows exactly when the building will reopen to the public and where we can resume public meetings. That being said, uh, you know, I think at least my experience using Zoom in our town, um, the same number of people who would have come out to the meeting at town hall appeared on Zoom. Um, I've heard reports from other municipalities where they felt there was more public participation, um, that, you know, uh, it's very highly possible that we had more public participation last year as a result. It, it's, it's hard for me to kinda really gauge. It would be interesting to have the same applications again in the building, just to see what would happen. But, uh, that said, I think our bylaws may wanna make provisions for situations like this. Um, we did post on the website that was in compliance with the executive orders, the procedural, how we wanted to handle applications, how we wanted to handle those things. So we can kinda try to build something new, if you will, into our bylaws that can address these, these situations. But it really didn't-
That would be a good idea.
You know, but th- this commission's functioning really didn't, wasn't impeded a whole heck of a lot. Um, in my opinion, we only missed a couple of months and once we got Zoom going, um, it, things seemed to run relatively smoothly.
So, agreed.
Yeah, we may have to look at what's in our, you know, charter for that. As right now, we're operating under the executive order from the governor.
Right, so that's a discussion that's gotta maybe the direction from the Board of Selectmen.
That may, yeah, that could be a townwide thing. We wanted to go there.
So, but again, you guys can always revisit your bylaws at any time during the year, you know, just, you know, so if the Board of Selectmen come out with a recommendation or a suggestion or a mandate or whatever it is, we can, we can accommodate that, right?
Okay, so, uh, do we need a motion to direct you to do that or is that?
No, I, I I have consensus that you want me to do that and-
Yeah, that, that would be very helpful, I think. And, um, maybe we can leave it on the agenda for old business and
Great.
and discuss it again next, next month. Uh, any further comments on bylaws? Thank you for that, everyone. That was good, which, uh, brings us to new business. So, we had a, a vote earlier to add, uh, an item to the agenda, which would be, um, election of new new board members, um, so, I'm trying to think of, um, the process here. So, so do I hear, do, I need to get some nominations, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So you would call for nominations to-
Okay, so I'm gonna open the floor for nominations. Do I hear any nominations? Uh, okay, so, since I, yeah, I'm, I feel like I'm the only one that would be in a position to, to make a, a recommendation at this point for Mr. Larry Fitzgerald. Uh, his resume was brought to the table. We all know Larry. He's, uh, served this commission well. He was secretary for some period of time. And, um, even stayed on after the election when he was no longer a board member to help with the P O C D. We did have a a Republican candidate withdraw from our board and resign. Uh, generally I wouldn't, um, bring up the topic of partisanship. Um, I feel like this board has done a really, really good job of being bipartisan and doing all of its business as a bipartisan, uh, board. And I'd like to keep it that way. Um, I feel like we do some really good work and we have some really good discussion and, um, partisan politics doesn't seem to generally come into our, uh, discussion. Um, that said, as we were operating before, we were an evenly split board, so, that said, I, I also want, want to, you know, say that, um, both of the candidates that have expressed interest are very high, very high achieving individuals that, um, would, would, uh, do a good job at this position. So anyway, with all that, um, my, uh, my, I'm gonna nominate Larry Fitzgerald. Do I hear a second?
I will second, um, your nomination.
Okay, second from Michelle Williams. Do I hear any other nominations? Do I, I have to ask three times, right?
Three times, by Robert's rule.
That was two, right? Uh, do I hear any other nominations? Okay. Any further discussion?
Um, yeah, I, I'll add to the discussion. Um, I appreciate that Spencer's here with us tonight and I am very happy that he submitted interest because I think one of the main things we've seen on this commission and in being involved in our local government is that it really takes a lot of people to come step forward and volunteer to keep things running. Um, I did notice that we have an alternate vacancy as well, so I'd like to explore that, um, later. Um, but in terms of the nomination for Larry, um, I feel like, uh, Larry's commitment to the board and to the subcommittee of the P O C D, even as a non-member when his term expired, uh, was very valuable to us.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. That, I agree a hundred percent, um, with your comments and also wanna express the thanks to Mr. Clapp and, um, acknowledge that, um, we would be happy to have his expertise on our commission if he's still willing to, uh, volunteer for it at a later time. So, hearing no other nominations-
It looks like Rich has a comment.
I just, I'm sorry, I just wanna comment, I appreciate, you know, Spencer Clapp's participation and I was really impressed by his resume and his qualifications and I I hope he'll be involved in some capacity with planning and, you know, that he could apply for another position at some time or volunteer for any activities or any subcommittees. And from personal experience of Larry, um, being, I wasn't on the planning commission with him, but with the P O C Ds, very helpful to me on my, uh, chapters that I was writing, typically gonna work with a library, uh, library board and the historical society, he was also involved with it, so. Appreciate his work with the, with the planning commission even after he was no longer on the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Uh, any further discussion?
Kirk, is that for the full position? I just wanna clarify.
Yes, yeah, we, we can't do the, uh, alternate at this point because our time period, that, that has to get sent to the, um, the Board of Selectmen fulfillment now.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I'm gonna move to vote. Um, I'm gonna do a vote by roll call. Uh, Michelle Williams?
Aye.
Richard Gordon?
Aye.
Nicole Davidson?
Aye.
Uh, Kirk Scott, aye. Uh, let the record show four zero zero, um, Mr. Fitzgerald has, has been reelected or been elected to the board.
Appointed.
Appointed, yes, thank you.
Hey Kirk? So to answer your question, Michelle, because it was thirty days, I think since that alternate position opened up, I think it opened up actually in election when, when, uh, new members are sworn in. So I think it's been, it's been beyond the thirty days for, for planning. So, um, we are aware of that. I think it was missed for a little while and maybe that was my, my fault for not, not bringing it up. There are two Ds on the, as alternates right now, so it has to be a U or R. Or a non, a non-D because of minority representation. So I think that's known now and we're looking to fill that seat for you. And I especially came in, you know, tonight where you only have four members, where you could've used another member. So, um, we're gonna hope to fill that gap soon at the Board of Selectmen.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and it would be great if we could, I think, I'm not sure that it even came up on an agenda that Mary had resigned. So I would love for either, maybe as we're addressing our bylaws, um, to try to make this process a bit more transparent if possible, moving forward.
That's it, that's a first statement. Um, we we will, we, we will address that. Yeah, that's a fair statement. Okay, so-
I think it was effective on the second. It was, it wasn't, it hasn't been a month. It was, it was a letter, I think that went maybe your packet, but it was effective on the second.
February second.
Yeah.
Right, but even if we were notified today, we wouldn't have had time.
Right. Uh, okay, so with that, that, um, is the end of our agenda. Uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Joe moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
I thought no one was gonna do it.
You guys are enjoying this meeting a, a lot. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole Davidson. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, um, uh, Michelle Williams?
Aye.
Nicole Davidson?
Aye.
Richard Gordon?
Aye.
Kirk Scott, aye. All right, let the record show eight thirty-seven, uh, meeting adjourned.